Good afternoon. I will go ahead and call us to order. We will start on time, so we can leave on time. We're a little bit with the skeleton crew today, but we do have a quorum and someone, Deputy County Manager Ramos, sitting in for Mr. Bryant. So we'll go ahead and begin with introductions to my right.
Good afternoon. I'm Alyssa Easton, Deputy Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon. I'm Barb Felder, Clerk to -- with the Clerk's Office.
Good afternoon. I am Susan Rodriguez McDowell, and I have the honor of being elected by the people of District Six.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good afternoon. I'm George Dunlap, elected by the people of District Three.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin. I have the pleasure of serving as County Commissioner at large.
Good afternoon. My name is Lee Altman. I have the pleasure of serving at large and also as Vice Chair today, sitting in for our Chairman Mark Jarrell, who had to be away.
Good afternoon. My name is Vilma De Leek, and I represent the most powerful people in the district. That's District Two, and I'm honored to represent the people of District Two.
Good afternoon. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, also known as Commissioner YTI. I have the privilege of serving you at large, and I'm happy to thank you.
Good afternoon. Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Good afternoon. Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff, sitting in temporarily for County Manager Bryant.
I know Commissioner Powell is on her way, and was there staff that you would also like to have recognized in the room?
Yes, of course. We'll start first with our executive team.
And Dr. Kim Campbell, Deputy County Manager.
Also, going to key staff.
Good afternoon. Raynard Washington, Public Health Director.
Good afternoon. Adrian Cox, County Budget Director.
Good afternoon, everybody. Michael Griswold, Director of Strategy and Innovation.
I think that's it for today.
All right. Thank you. We will rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I turn the meeting over to Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, Vice Chair Altman and members of the Board. County Manager Bryant has three agenda items for you at today's Budget Public Policy Meeting. The first item on our agenda this afternoon is a follow-up from the Board's October Fall Retreat. At the retreat, county staff presented options for consideration to redesign the community service grant program, which is currently on pause in FY 2026 due to limited funding. The Board requested to have further discussion and dialogue on this topic at a Budget Public Policy Meeting. This afternoon, Budget Director Adrian Cox will briefly speak to the proposed community service grant program redesign, discuss the feedback that we have gathered from nonprofit partners on two aspects of that proposal, and present some options and a new recommendation for the Board's consideration. So with that, I will ask Director Cox to begin his presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. Let me get organized here. So today, I am going to briefly remind everyone of the proposed changes that I shared a few weeks ago at the retreat. I'm going to go over the feedback that we gathered from the current vendors on two of the timeline changes that we brought before you, and touch on a few options for your consideration, and then we have a recommendation for next steps. So here is a summary of the presentation that I provided on the 28th. The full presentation is also included as an appendix to this deck if you want to look back at it. There are six elements to the CSG redesign that I presented. First, we proposed eliminating the three-year sunset policy and requiring the former CSGs that have been baselined in the budget to return to competing for funding through the grant process. Next, we also recommended using fund balance based on a predetermined percentage of available balance to fund the CSG program each year, the proposed amount being 5%. Pegging our grant funding to our available fund balance would help to promote a financially responsible program going forward. If we do not have available fund balance at the end of any year in the future, we would, of course, notify the grantees well in advance of the upcoming cycle. The third element of the redesign process was to change the application to focus on performance outcomes aligned to the county's balance scorecard. Applicants would submit programs for funding that directly or indirectly affect these outcomes. We proposed establishing minimums and maximums for grant funding to provide clarity to applicants and to help ensure a competitive process in which programs are positioned to be successful. Along with this recommendation, we would also reestablish a small amount of the Board's contingency. The timeline I presented last week would shift the award period to February through January, similar to the ARPA grants that the county provided. Awards could be made during the year after the available funding has been determined. And lastly, we proposed allowing two-year grants to open up the option for different programs that may function better with a longer-term funding commitment. At the retreat, the Board asked that staff gather feedback from the organizations that are currently funded as vendors who were formerly CSG grantees regarding two elements related to the timing of the funding. We polled these 22 organizations about shifting the timeframe for the funding from July to June to February to January, and also about the option for two-year grant awards. Of the 22 vendors that we polled, we received responses back from eight of those. Here's the question that we asked regarding the timeline. Out of the eight respondents, two organizations did not express a concern with the February to January award period. Two noted that the initial gap in funds would be a challenge, although we did acknowledge this matter in the poll question, and four indicated that they would prefer the county funding to be awarded to them from July to June. So these responses are all provided also as an appendix to this deck. We also asked a question about the option for two-year grants, and all eight organizations responded to the poll, expressed that this would be a positive change, and one of the organizations also suggested providing a cost of living in that second year. So those are the responses that we received related to the timeline. Considering the feedback that we have collected, here are some possible options for your consideration. First, you could approve the proposed redesign as we presented. But if we go in this direction, the manager could also identify funding to cover the gap of funding that would occur for the former CSG vendors between that July to February timeframe. However, based on a competitive grant process, there is still no guarantee that all of the current vendors would be awarded a grant. Second, given the feedback we received about the timeline, you could approve the other aspects of the CSG redesign proposal but maintain a July to June timeframe. However, the next available time that new grants could be awarded is fiscal year 2028, and that's because we need some time to implement a call for grant applications, establish review panels, and evaluate the programs. Also, there is currently no funding allocated to begin this process. So finally, after hearing the feedback from the Board at the retreat and from our community partners, the recommendation from staff is to continue with the pause on the community service grants and to design a program that will realign funding to the new balance scorecard in fiscal year 2028. So what would this mean? For the upcoming fiscal year, the grant program would remain paused. Existing vendors would not be required to compete as grantees in fiscal year 27, but we would continue to assess these agreements through the annual budget process as we have done in the past. A contingency fund will be included in the manager's recommended budget, which could be used for any small one-time initiatives that come up throughout the year. And in October 2026, we would begin accepting applications for grants for fiscal year 2028. Then for fiscal year 28, the county will have fully implemented the balance scorecard. Performance outcomes aligned to the objectives of the balance scorecard would allow us to identify the areas of greatest need in the county. For fiscal year 2028, the county's funding for our partners would be determined through a competitive process based upon the areas of greatest need. So grants would then be awarded July 2027. So here's the draft balance scorecard that Michael Griswold presented to all of you at the Fall Retreat. To illustrate how this approach would work for fiscal year 28, you will notice that one of the objectives under learning and educational opportunities is to promote literacy and digital access. Once the scorecard is complete and performance outcomes have been identified for all of these objectives, if we find that we are lagging behind where we want to be as a county for our metrics related to promoting literacy and digital access, then we would look to fund grants that can improve these metrics, and we would do the same for any of the other areas that we see on our scorecard that we need to focus on. So this slide lays out the timeline for what we are recommending. Between now and July, the Office of Strategy and Innovation will complete the balance scorecard and identify performance outcomes aligned to each of the objectives. At the same time, we will assess existing vendors as we typically do, but the former CSG grantees would not be required to compete for funding. In May, the manager's recommended budget will include a contingency for small one-time initiatives, and in October 2026, we will issue a call for applicants -- applications for grants that will be considered as part of fiscal year 2028, and funding for these grants would be included as part of the manager's fiscal year 2028 budget recommendation. So that is our recommendation, and I will take any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And just to be clear, this is to give feedback. We will not be voting, correct?
That is correct. We just want Commissioner feedback.
Okay. I will start on my left with Commissioner Leek.
Thank you. Let me first say thank you for the presentation. Very clear. If we understand, and we do understand what you're saying and what we said, I'm in agreement with what we have before us. The only question I have is not January, but January -- we recommended January to what?
So we're recommending keeping the program on a July to June timeframe based upon the feedback that we've heard, and the awards would begin as part of the 2028 budget.
Thank you. That's it, and thank you so much.
Commissioner YTI.
Adrian, thank you so much. Just have a couple of questions. One of them, it was you polled, how many vendors do we have out of the 22 that you requested? Only eight responded. Is that, I mean, is that a good sample?
So that's who responded within the timeframe, so we gave them about a week to be able to provide responses, and we reached out to all the contacts that we have on our contracts for these.
Can you give me an approximation of how many that was out of the?
It was eight out of 22.
No, I mean, how many vendors do we have? Like, how many did you send it to?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. That's all that you sent it to, but how many do we have?
So 22, that is how many vendors that we have that were former CSGs, and those were the only ones that we were talking about coming back to compete.
And is there a reason that you did "former" instead of "current"?
So we don't have any current CSGs right now because the program's on pause.
Okay, okay. Then with the contingency fund, have we defined what constitutes "small" from that fund that you mentioned that the county manager will set aside? Have we defined what the "small" and what those are? Are we waiting to do that, the contingency fund?
We haven't defined what that is. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the previous contingency fund was $125,000 in total, and so we're proposing that we bring that contingency back and that it be available for one-time things that may come up throughout the year.
That's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, and we've just had one of our colleagues join us, so if you would like to introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. I am Commissioner Elaine Powell. I represent North Mecklenburg, which I just drove here from. So I represent Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will circle back to you so you have time to catch up.
Thank you.
And also, welcome to our county manager.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Mike Bryant, Mecklenburg County Manager.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner SRM.
Thank you. So Adrian, I appreciate you presenting all of this. I'm trying to catch up in my brain with this whole cycle thing, because my understanding was you guys were trying to do a February to January, but now you're not doing that. Is that right? Am I getting that right?
So that's correct. What we are proposing is lining, keeping it lined up with our fiscal year.
Okay.
The grants would, once we have our balance scorecard in place, we would align our program to that balance scorecard, and the first grants would go out in fiscal year 28, which means we'd have a call for applications October 26.
Okay. So there was a piece in there where you talked about a gap in funding, and there would be a filling in of the gap for that, because it's such a long timeframe?
No, what I was -- no, I'm sorry. That refers to if you were to move forward with the February timeframe, if we felt like that was something that we wanted to keep, then there is an opportunity to backfill that gap. There's different approaches to it.
Okay. I like this idea of staying aligned with our budget, and maybe it's just because my brain isn't complex enough to figure out how to do that off-year like that, so I support that. I wanted to also just mention one question. So the -- one of the differences is previously we would have had a CSG as a line item in the budget, so what this proposal is doing is taking it out of being its own line item and making it a part of the fund balance. Is that right? It's coming from there as opposed to the operating budget. Is that right?
So in fiscal year 28, if we fund the CSG program with fund balance, it would still be a line item in the budget. It's just a matter of the source that it comes from.
Right, so that's changing. I'm just trying to understand. This kind of changes it from like a, like operational budget to being dependent upon how much we have in our fund balance?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's a percentage of that instead of a set amount, which is the way it used to be?
That's correct.
Okay.
It will be predetermined based on the fund balance we have available at that given time.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to say two things that I want to advocate for the quarterly reporting process to be improved. I think there's been a little, you know, concern around regular check-ins and just more open communication, just clear communication and accountability so that we don't come up at the end and find out that the numbers weren't quite right. There seems like there was a little reporting issues there. And also, it was mentioned to me that we should be really clear in our categories, that we're defining our categories clearly and making sure that there's fair and balanced distribution of funds across the areas of need. So that was feedback I got from a community member. Thank you.
Thank you, and you know, I probably should have made sure that we're clear going through because you're looking for clarity as to which option we're going to be pursuing. So I think what I've been hearing so far, the commissioners who have spoken, is they're okay with option three, which is the manager's recommended option. Can that come up on the screen, please?
Yeah.
But I don't, I want to just, before we get even further down this conversation, make sure I heard it correctly so that we're all on the same page. Is that right? Okay. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Meyer.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Adrian. I also agree with keeping it in the fiscal year. So two questions. The amount is going to change every year because our fund balance changes every year?
That's correct.
So I guess my only question about that is how do, are we going to limit each, is there going to be a limit? Like, how do we let them know how much is available if we don't even know?
So we would base that amount off of the fund balance that we have at the end of the fiscal year for the next fiscal year.
Okay.
And so there's this lag period of time so that we can give plenty of notice to them and so that we actually, because you know, the fund balance figure changes and change daily, but it would give us a set point of time where we have a firm, you know, confirmed number that we can use, and then we could share that with them for the future cycle.
Okay.
But in addition to the dollar amount, the significance of regarding what that total budget will be, just as important is what we're investing in, what services are we buying to support the different goals and outcomes in the balance scorecard. That is equally as important as what that budget will be.
Okay, and I can't remember the page. You talked about, hold on a second, about the categories that we're going to be looking at. Oh, there it is. Is that board priorities that you're talking about?
So what we're talking about here is a balance scorecard, which is what we're working to put together. And once we have that balance scorecard, it will, and this is just a draft.
Okay.
It would encompass these areas, and we would know based upon the performance that is aligned to these individual objectives where we have areas that are in need, and so we'd be able to, you know, tailor our grant program.
You may recall at your Fall Retreat, Michael Griswold did a crosswalk with your board priorities to the outcomes here on the balance scorecard, so there is some relationship there.
Okay.
And he'll be bringing that back forward to you in the near future also.
Okay, and thank you for all your work. This is great.
Thank you. Adrian, do you mind going to page 11, just so we can see that? Commissioner Dunlap.
All right. First of all, and I'm going by the points on the redesign summary, you're proposing to eliminate the three-year sunset policy. I think when we do that, we put ourselves back in the situation that we were in previously, where people get funded from the county and they assume that they're going to be funded forever, and we don't give them any incentive to get off our taxpayer roll. It's almost like a sense of entitlement, which is why we got rid of that in the first place. And so having them to apply every two years, I think the concern I have is if you've got people applying every two years, you end up with staggered applications, because somebody applies this year, they win a grant, they're going to be funded for two years, next year comes up. I heard you say that the people who were funded would not be prohibited from asking for additional funds that second year when they're already funded for a two-year grant. So I'd like to hear how you resolve that, and the notion that people who are not a part of the CSG or whatever you're calling them, basically get what's left after these groups are funded. So talk to me about how that works.
So first off, backing up to the sunset policy, the sunset policy that was in place before we paused the CSG program, what that meant was that an applicant could have a successful application three years, and then after three years, they would no longer be allowed to apply for a grant, but they would have the opportunity to apply as a vendor. The intent of that policy when it was first set up was to do, to address just what you were talking about. It was intended to address programs becoming dependent upon county funds. What happened in actuality was a lot of these programs became vendors, and it began to balloon the budget. And so even though we had that three-year policy, and even when we had that policy, it was never a guarantee that any program would be funded each year, and we made that clear for all of the applicants at the front of the process. However, it led to the, to what I just described. So but what we are proposing is that we no longer have a three-year policy, but we simply go back to having a grant program that runs on an annual basis, and people apply on an annual basis. Did that address the question?
I'm happy to come back to you for a second round, Mr. Dunlap.
Yeah, I'll come back.
Okay. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you for the, for the presentation. To answer the question, option three is what I, what I support. The only comment I'd have is one I had before during the retreat, and that is the sharpness of the goals, the clarity of the goals is really important, not only just for us and funding, but also for the community, as they can see the improvements and the progress and success of this new approach. That is my only, only question, but appreciate the work in formulating a framework and just waiting for all of my colleagues to roll out sleaze up and see what the pudding looks like. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, madam, madam vice chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. So Adrian or County Manager, like, some of this is so good. I'm happy to see it, and if you would just talk about how, you know, in the language that you guys speak, how this promotes fiscal discipline and how this keeps the budget from ballooning, you know, like, do you think this will help deflate it?
Well, from my perspective, it allows us to be more intentional as relates to what results we want to pay for, and because to Commissioner, as to Commissioner Griffin's point, as we define the SMART goals and the outcomes we're looking for, and as we evaluate where we're trending well and what are those opportunities, we can be more prescriptive to exactly what it is in terms of the type of investments we want to make, as opposed to casting, which is what we do now, a much broader net. So we're just looking at, for illustrative purposes, three of those results in that scorecard. Access, for example, we will focus solely on access, as opposed to historically what we've done is in addition to access, we fund other programs, too great programs, but in terms of being more fiscally disciplined and intentional and managing to the scorecard and those outcomes, this framework will allow us to do that, which will allow us to be more fiscally responsible with the investments that we're making and the outcomes that we're buying.
So really, taxpayer dollar spent intentionally and with more return.
That's correct.
Thank you. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
More return that moves the Dow along the way with your priorities, which is outlined in the scorecard.
Yes, I'm happy for this. Thank you.
All right. A couple of folks wanted to do round two, two minutes. Commissioner Leek.
My question is what programs, our program has been with the county in receiving funds the longest? How many years?
So thank you, Commissioner, for that question. We did look back.
Say that again.
I said, "Thank you for that question." We have been looking back to try to answer that question, and as far as I can go back on our paper copy documents, which actually go farther than the system I'm able to get into right now, I know that Arts and Science has received quite a bit of program funding. They used to be a, what we'd call an OSA. I believe Communities and Schools is one of them as well, but I'm getting to a point where I'm out of old historical budget books to go back and look at to get you that information.
I think the public would want to know this because I've been asked that repeatedly from out the community. from out the community, who has been receiving funds, taxpayers' money, the longest.
We'll go back and see if I can pinpoint a list based upon the oldest date that we have.
Right. But thank you so much. My next question deals specifically with programs proving that they are successful and we still fund them or not fund them. It depends upon... And this brings a question. Excuse me. This brings a question that I've been asked. Those of us who sit here as county commissioners and sit on boards that request money, how do we distinguish between their participation and not participation? I know they don't vote when we vote for the budget, but I've gotten many questions about that, from my district, from District Two.
So, with regard to the Board of Commissioners taking votes and if you are sitting on a board, which is a nonprofit that the county is funding, I believe board members have to recuse themselves from those votes and you all do that on a regular basis.
Yep. Our lawyer keeps us straight.
And Commissioner Leake, going back to your first question regarding funding programs that are performing well, with this new model, again, if we identify three to five areas that we want to invest in regarding the performance and outcomes we want to buy, historically, if those programs, other programs have been performing well, but they're not aligned to those three to five areas, they may not be funded moving forward.
Thank you.
That is a possible outcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Yti.
And just one more question that I'm... This is separate from a sponsorship, correct? Sponsorship and community service grants are two different things.
That's correct.
They're separate, yes.
And are we looking at revamping that process as well, since it... That may be a different topic for later, but I just...
Yeah, that's a different topic for later.
Okay. Going around to my right, Commissioner Dunlap.
Okay. First of all, I want clarity on whether or not the existing vendors will continue to be vendors. And if so, and we're going to award grants to people who apply, other than changing the timetable and where the money's coming from, what's the difference?
So, Commissioner, in fiscal year '27, the ones who are vendors would remain vendors. In fiscal year '28, we would ask that they apply for a grant.
Vendors would have to apply like everybody else?
The former CSGs that are now vendors, yes.
Okay. So, once those are approved, are we going to then create a new vendor list? Or is everybody going to have to apply on that two-year timetable?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I don't want the current vendors to view that comment and answer, question and answer as they get a pass. We will be looking at their performance for '27 as well. So, yes, they will still remain in the budget starting out, but as I develop my recommended budget, we'll be looking at their performance to see if they have been achieving exactly what they've outlined.
Okay.
But starting out, yes, that 4.8...
That's right.
That 4.8 million is currently, will be in the base budget. And it'll go through the cycle just like all other services.
And how do you plan to address the concern about building in a increase for...
Well, go ahead.
In terms of the response that we got from a... From a organization that said if they had a two-year grant, they would like the county to consider increases in the future. What I would suggest is that if we are doing applications for two years, that those nonprofits would spell out what that expense is going to be over two years, and if they felt like they needed increases in that second year, that that is part of their application. And that way, we could evaluate it.
Thank you. And then, last, Commissioner Powell.
I really think... I liked your question, Commissioner Leake, because these are the things, like, the things we hear from, concerns from the community about, you know, quite often the same people getting money over and over. And it seems, you know, I read the article in the newspaper this morning about who applied to be on the Transit Authority. And when you look at who applied, like, you know, all these power players who want a voice, these power players that you see everywhere, they have disproportionate sway and they try to put pressure on us. And so, the community is worried about that. It's a legitimate concern, you know, to see power players putting sway on, trying to put sway on us and, you know, seemingly getting their way over and over. It seems like this process will scrutinize that so that the people that are getting the money are the people that are making the biggest difference. Correct?
Correct.
And so, I under... Like, I really like your question because they do put pressure on us. And, you know, we have to be... We have to really scrutinize that and be really responsible with taxpayer dollars. And so, it's coming to an end. Like, we really have to pay attention to where the dollars go. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. And I don't... Yes, ma'am?
If it's...
Oh, I thought... Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'm going in and out of understanding something and I want to get, just get it clear, and that's around vendors. So, if we could use an example, like, there's a... So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding how this is. The CSGs are specific programs with a beginning and ending, but then we do have another category of vendors that do ongoing work. Is that right? Say, let's, an example like Block Love Charlotte, you know, like, they're our, you know, feet and arms and legs in the community, right? So, they're not just doing like a two-year program, right? They're a vendor that's doing the county's work. So, are they subject to these cycles? Or are they, you know, how does that work? And I don't know if I'm conflating issues here, but I'm confused about it.
And I understand the... It is somewhat confusing in the way that we have converted some grantees into vendors and we're using that terminology. We have hundreds of vendors that we do business with, and what we're proposing is the grants that we took and kind of converted them into a vendor status. Those are the ones we're referring to, not the hundreds of nonprofits and for-profits and that we do business with on an annual basis.
Okay. So, they're not being turned into shortened programs that they have to keep competing for? They continue to be our vendor?
That is correct. But I would also say that even all of the services that the county procures, we use a procurement process. It is typically a competitive procurement process, so there is that.
Okay. So, they might still have to compete with others that do the same work they do. But we're going to be... We continue to scrutinize those vendors?
At some point, we will continue to have a procurement process, yes. We'll continue to do that. We'll continue to have competitive bidding and we'll continue to do all of those things for the purpose of the grant program. We're simply talking about the ones that were former grants.
Thank you. That really helps. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good discussion. Really important. And my contribution is to say that I do support the third option that's been recommended by the manager. So, at this time, we will, if that is all on that, turn to the second item. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Adrian. Madam Vice Chair, I'm going to ask that you recognize Karen Pelletier to provide an update on unsheltered response strategy.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners, County Manager Bryant and staff. My name's Karen Pelletier. I'm the Division Director for Housing Innovation and Stabilization Services with Mecklenburg County. And I'm here this afternoon to provide an overview of the engagement the county has had in the Babys Ford Katherine Simmons Task Force and to share a plan developed with input from stakeholders to address the quality of life conditions of people, particularly those who are living unsheltered in that corridor. This presentation focuses on the immediate health and human services components of the framework, but we are working in close coordination with the City of Charlotte, Charlotte Mecklenburg Police, who are also leveraging their respective resources to address the issues that parallel and in partnership with us, including focused law enforcement, economic development, property acquisition, and code enforcement. While we believe that this framework, which is modeled after other unsheltered and encampment responses, will offer short-term relief, some of the broader strategies will take longer to achieve sustained impacts. So, I would like to level set before moving forward and acknowledge that this task force was developed as a result of ongoing issues in the corridor that have gone undressed or unresourced for years. This task force has been meeting since July and is currently led by Doronda Metz, who's now with my sister's house, and consists of community advocates, elected officials such as Commissioner Leake, who's been a voice on this task force, other nonprofits, the business community, neighborhood associations, CNPD, City of Charlotte. So, a pretty long list of folks who have been engaged in this, in this work. We have been working with the City of Charlotte to finalize a larger joint response, and they're working with, through their city leadership in determining next steps that would be based in their scope. We are also engaging with Alliance Health, excuse me, to determine what are the resources that they can assist us with. We actually met with them earlier today to start building some of that relationship and a better understanding of how they can work with us. This proposal is not designed to address all systemic and historical issues that have negatively impacted that once vibrant community, but rather addresses unmet health and human services of people living unhoused in that area and add relief to the community. It is not only a piece of a larger community response to the corridor, it also steps... It also helps bring us closer to solving for homelessness in Charlotte Mecklenburg. We intend to make this a model that we can replicate in other areas that have similar issues and needs. There are needs beyond health and human services for that corridor. I'm not going to talk about those today. This is truly about our health and human services response. So, just to kind of help level set on the area that we're talking about, you'll see there, right in the middle, we have a park there. That's Lincoln Heights Park is in there. We do have the Department Director, Nick Walker, here too, to talk, not to talk about the B, but to show and support about the work that is being done in partnership with Street Outreach and the Park Rangers on some of the issues that they're experiencing in the park. And then, the smaller, but not less significant county seal over here shows the LaSalle Street, which I'll talk about in a moment. But that's just to kind of help describe the corridor that, what I'm here to talk about So, this is the proposal. And so, we intend to really lean in with services in the community for people who are open to engaging and receiving assistance. And we want to reduce barriers by having dedicated support and space for people. This starts with increasing street outreach, extending hours of mobile showers in the corridor, and expanding and maintaining emergency shelter for both men and women, and having space, as the hub that I referenced, for providers to access. This allows people to come inside and have a safe space to share their stories and consider alternatives. We know that many of the people who are living unhoused in that area are also victims of sex and drug traffickers, and we want to have a safe space for people to come in, engage in services without fear. Included in this plan is also creating stronger pathways to resources such as detox, behavioral health resources, immunizations, and testing and health screenings. The slide here illustrates more detail regarding the services and then the costs associated with it. This plan or proposal is about costs through this fiscal year, so through June 30th, 2025. It launches the work and sustains, again, just through this fiscal year. As I stated, we're... We are considering this plan to model for about six months with three of those months including access to this hub off LaSalle Street. This is a community with a complex needs and have gone unmet for a number of years. We are not anticipating a sudden change, but rather a steady level of engagement that will lead to greater connection. This is really about an enhancement and dedication to the area of services in the area. So, with Street Outreach, we're talking about Hearts for the Invisible, who's already our lead Street Outreach provider in our community. They believe in having that dedicated staff that are there to be able to be boots on the ground every day. It provides for two dedicated staff to build trust, engage, and connect people living unsheltered to resources. It also includes some flexible funding for diversion. We know that not everyone living unhoused needs that permanent supportive housing model. We also know that people have income, but they need that first month's rent and security deposit. Or there's opportunities to help people return to their communities where they may have greater support. So, this is included in this for Hearts for the Invisible. Adding hours at Project Outpour is also included. They're currently there on Wednesdays for three hours, and what they are seeing are between 50 and 80 people coming there for showers, access to laundry, receiving replacements for personal items, toiletries. They're also, even though they're seeing a great number of people, they're also turning people away. So, this plan includes adding three hours to that Wednesday slot. Expanding shelter for women. This adds shelter capacity at my sister's house and church in the city for 75 women. Included in these include case management, resident advisors, meals for shelter guests, and security. It includes sustaining operations for Roof Above's Giles Center. This is funding that would be for their April through June. There's currently 138 men that sleep there every single night. There isn't currently funding beyond April. And it is also worth noting that they did allow for 45 additional men to sleep there the last two nights when winter weather was upon us. Also, we also include in this a landing space, as I mentioned, utilizing what was Project Lift or part of, public health space for a hub. The costs here include maintenance and security costs for that space. Again, we want to make sure that we have what people need while they're coming, while we're coming in there. We can't... And so, also included in here, but not mentioned on the slide, is about looking at how we're expanding our behavioral health resources, as well as creating greater bridges to detox and to other behavioral health. The meeting that we had this earlier today with Alliance Health spoke about that. We're continuing to engage with them to see about what in their scope, the resources that we need, that they should be able to cover based on their role in the community in serving people with behavioral health needs. So, as I mentioned previously, the city is convening and determining how and where to invest. However, the county is currently poised to potentially begin services in the next few weeks. Upon approval, we can... Upon approval, we can deploy resources. Hearts for the Invisible indicates that they would have currently ARPA funding that could get them started in hiring additional staff now, and then us being able to assist them on the back end. Shelter for women can begin when they're able to hire and train staff. Both of the facilities are zoned by the Fire Marshal, according to the agencies, and they believe that they could start that shelter expansion in December. Giles currently has operational dollars now, but this funding is for that April through June funding to fill that gap. Public Health is working with asset and facility management regarding reopening LaSalle and will serve, again, as that hub for the first three months of this initiative. Currently, the strategic outreach and increased services are planned for six months, and as I said, will continue to assess. As I mentioned at the start of the presentation, this is a model that we intend to move to other high-end concentrated areas based on the success and challenges of this one. So when we talk about funding for this, the request is to utilize the unspent allocation of the $7 million that you first approved on May 20th for the purchase and renovation of the microtel, which was expanding that non-congregate shelter. The city has approved funding through its Housing Trust Fund to offset some of that purchase and renovation, and what the request here is about using some of the remaining balance with the approval to use some of those unspent funds for this initiative. Any cost beyond FY '26 will be funded through a home for all, and County Manager Bryant will have more details about that at a later date. So I do want to, in summary, manage also expectations in this request, that we know, that we believe, based on our experience, that people will engage and choose alternatives. However, as we know, people have complicated histories, they have long histories of homelessness, trauma, possibly addiction, and unmet mental health. This, however, is a start and a message that shows the county's further commitment in serving our community. And with that...
Thank you so much. Begin again on my left, Commissioner Leek.
If you're not ready, I can skip you.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me first say, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
I have become addicted to that community and others who's suffering the same problem. It didn't just start last week or two, three months ago. It's been three or four years, even longer. And if you have not visited these areas, you should. I want to thank the manager and the pastor of Friendship Baptist Church for beginning to formulate some movement that would impact the lives of the people there. There are a lot of children over on Newland Road, right next to where we're talking about. And this is a sad situation. We have a lot of churches, rec centers right there, where Charlotte Rec Center is right there also, which is not being utilized as much as it could be to impact the young people in that neighborhood. But there are several schools in that community that could be utilized also, so I hope that we will look at it. But I'm concerned about the hotel purchase. What is the outcome of that? Did you say to us?
So the hotel purchase was something that was approved in May, and that is the purchase and renovation of a hotel...
For housing?
For, it's a non-congregate shelter. This would be for people that have lived outside, that would be hesitant, that come into a large congregate space, but this is for, it's a hotel that would be used for like, single-room occupancy for emergency shelter.
And my next concern, I think the city is also cooperating with the plans of that apartment complex that's right there off of Beatties Ford Road, behind the filling station.
Yes.
And there are a lot of young women and young men who are there, and drug abuse is very popular in that area. And I find myself going every day through that community, and almost hit a woman that was lying in the street. Had I not been paying attention while I was driving, I might could have hit her, and I think about it every time I go over there. But again, to the manager and to the committee that's been meeting, talk is fine, now it's time for action, and this is what you have presented to us, is an action plan. My question is, can we afford to do what we say we need to do, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager?
Thank you for that. First, I want to underscore one observation you made, and that is that the city and the county is collaborating to address, as Karen categorized it as these hotspots, and the intent is to replicate this work in the other areas of the county. Regarding affordability, we can't afford what is being presented to you, because we're going to utilize the funds that you approved to go towards the purchase of that hotel that came in under the initial amount that we thought would be required. So we can reappropriate those dollars to fund this, to get us through the fiscal year, because I didn't want to wait until next fiscal year, because the urgency is now.
Exactly.
Then regarding next fiscal year, as Karen mentioned, I'll be bringing forward a more formal update, but the baseline of these additional dollars, this 1.8 million, will be part of a larger initiative. So it's my expectation that the community will be pitching in to fund this, so it doesn't fall on the shoulders of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, your bell went off.
All right, I'm sorry.
We can come back if you have more.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell.
I want to thank you for your work, Karen, because, you know, we all know your name, and we can count on you. And like, it's so nice to have someone so reliable. This weekend, I saw a homeless encampment on a major highway, and I took a snapshot of where I was so that I could send it to her, because I knew she would, I don't even have to worry, I know she's going to follow up on it. And so I know that you had a lot of work on this, and I appreciate it, and I feel like everything, you thought through every single thing, and I'm all for it. Like, yay. And the urgency is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
I thank you so much for this. This is actually part of the district that I live in, so always very concerned. I appreciate all of the effort that you put into this. And if I ask questions or make suggestions or recommendations, please don't take it as a criticism. It is absolutely not, because this is excellent, it is direly needed. Based on the other, based on what you propose here, do you have an anticipated list of programs and partners? I'll say programs and partners, and I understand now that it's city and county, so is there a list that have been kind of pre-approved, that, you know, they've worked well before? And add to that, I want to get my questions out before my bell goes off. Secondly, are we, if we're going with a model, I thought I heard you say, that we're replicating a model that has been done before, is there an understanding of how many people were able to serve in a specific amount of time, so that when we go to replicate it in other hotspots, that we'll have something to go on? And then my last question was, or maybe not the last, the building on LaSalle Street, so...
Thank you so much.
That is the former Project Lift building, if I'm understanding, and that's, did we poll to see whether that was the best, from the community and community leaders, to see whether that was the best use, or is it just, you know, we think that that's the best use for that area and for that time, and if it is perfect, great? Yeah, that's it.
So hopefully, I'll remember all three of your questions, but the first one is that we're starting with Hearts for the Invisible and Project Outpour, because those two are high-performing agencies, and they're boots on the ground today. So I think in helping them, they've been part of this Action Task Force as well. Project Outpour, which is a mobile shower unit agency, and then Hearts for the Invisible. So they are trusted in the community for the folks that we're trying to gain community with, and so that is, that's why we're starting with them, not to be exclusionary, we just know what we're getting with those two agencies. As far as other models, like every, this is like, it's the framework that we're talking about, that we would like to replicate. Some of this is built off of the work that we did with the North End Encampment. We knew we needed the folks doing the work, doing the work, because they have the trust, more so than they have of government. And so, yes, we can't necessarily pick up an exact model and send it over to Sugar Creek or Reagan Drive, but we can build off of what we're doing here and then adjust accordingly. But it's the framework that we believe in so far. And then I don't know if Dr. Washington wants to speak to the Project Lift building.
I can speak to that. Regarding the facility, if you recall, a month or so, I brought to you a proposal on how to utilize that facility regarding services being provided in the community. You gave us direction. We're moving forward in terms of soliciting service providers that could provide those exact services, so more to come on that. The use of the facility for this operation is just temporarily, so it will not conflict with any of that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you. Karen, thank you for acknowledging, you know, the complicated histories and just, you know, that, I really love this kind of focused, you know, taking this one space and trying this real laser focus on it. I think that's fantastic. I do love utilizing the building. I think that's fantastic that we get to use that building while we're figuring stuff out. And so the part where you said that there, this amount, just making sure I'm getting this right, this amount of money is to get us to June, through June, and then at that time, it gets picked up by a home for all funding and comes out, hopefully, of our funding and goes with community partners and stuff like that. That's, did I get that right?
That's correct. That's the intent.
I think it's great, and so thank you for presenting this today, and I think it's really, really hopeful, you know, to take this approach, and I'm super excited about it. Thank you.
Ms. Meyer.
Thank you, Karen. You were wonderful. We are so lucky to have you in this...
I hope County Manager Bryant is taking notice.
We are not paying you enough. Very big raise. Truly, thank you so much. I think you just answered my question because of Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, but basically, it's a pilot. We're going to see what works, and then in June, I mean, is it, it's a definite, we're definitely going to pick it up.
I wouldn't refer to it as pilot. I would refer to it as a launch.
Okay.
A pilot suggests we're going to test, and it may or may not move forward. We're going to move forward with this.
Okay.
There may be some lessons learned prior to scaling it to the other hotspots, but we're launching, as she mentioned, as early as November 18.
Right. I was about to say, this November 18th, that's next week. Okay, thank you. And my only other question is on page, I guess it's five or 40, the chart, potential partner, are these potential, or are they for sure?
We have had, I mean, I guess I can say for sure, even though, so for sure.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yeah, they're excited and engaged.
Awesome. All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Schneider Dunlap.
I don't have a whole lot more to say. I think the concerns have been, well, I do have just one concern, because I think this is a great program. Are we preparing for what we anticipate might happen this winter? Okay.
You're talking about the unhoused?
Yes.
Yeah, we had internal conversations, and I don't know if Assistant Deputy County Manager Derek Ramos want to speak to this, but we had some conversations just from these last couple of days, where the temperature reached below freezing as well. So we always have our finger on the pulse relative to the cold weather, and this was regardless of this initiative or not.
Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mad Vice Chair. You've answered a question about the LaSalle Street building proposal that's still being considered. The other piece, I keep asking this question, and Karen, you're out there, what's the reality in getting census? As Mecklenburg County continues to grow, we attract, and I'd like to know if people had a residence in Mecklenburg County for three years, they're our people, they're just unhoused, or in the case of Gaston County, where they closed their shelter, the Salvation Army closed their shelter, are people just moving from one county to the other? I don't know how challenging it would be to create a census, not to turn people away from services, but to try to get a handle in terms of this population of folk who are unhoused. I mean, I would imagine other people who come to Mecklenburg County looking for jobs and don't have a job, they end up in their cars, et cetera. But all of that information is really helpful, I think, in terms of strategizing long-term, how we respond to the unhoused. The other question is, this is winter, you get a different group of unhoused during the winter than you do in the summer. Second Ward High School has a house at 1905 Beatties Ford Road, and we're familiar with a lot of unhoused folk. There are also group homes along that stretch that are not unhoused, but their population, you're not going to be able to tell so much of the difference unless you actually interact with these folks. So the short-term piece, in terms of lessons learned, is a great thing, and I'd like to have some feedback as you look at the budget, Mr. Manager, for the next cycle, what do you do? But I think, Karen, there's just a different population in the summer, when it's warm, and the shelter that's unstateful down, just around the corner, that just walk up LaSalle Street to Beatties Ford Road. So as you talk about partnering with other nonprofit agencies, Mr. Manager, I'd certainly like to be a fly on the wall when that kind of discussion is going on, because of the challenges in that whole quadrant. It's a good program. Hopefully, it's the launch of something for not only Beatties Ford Road, but Reagan Drive and other places, Milton Road, et cetera, that we have. But certainly, you're going to need some serious partners, Mr. Manager.
I agree.
Time's up, so thank you.
All right. I didn't know, all right. Commissioner Leek had one last thing.
I hope I said thank you for your time.
You did, yes, me.
And my, the manager and the community people who were involved, it's not that we're outside of the community, because they are very much involved in decision-making and helping to make the right decisions, they feel for themselves. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you, because, but for the grace of God, it could be me down on that same street, or any of us sitting in here. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I just want to echo everything that my colleagues have said so beautifully, and it's pretty wonderful that AFM managed to come in under budget and, you know, therefore have these funds available so that we could quickly step into the gap. And, you know, I share the concern that we address these needs across the county, not just in Uptown. And so really, very, very happy with the leadership and the initiative, so thank you all. All right. At this time, we'll go to our final agenda item.
Thank you, Karen. Before I introduce the third item, just want to take a moment to acknowledge the team that's worked on this, this housing initiative. This is a complicated population, as you all know. When you talk about behavioral health, addiction, and the criminal behavior that we're dealing with... criminal behavior that we're dealing with, it's not as easy to just come up with a plan like that. And I want to recognize the team for taking the time to be responsive, to put something together. We started down this path back in August. And with respect to the complications associated with this type of population, I just want to thank them for coming together to put something that we hopefully can replicate, as has been stated, to address the other hotspots. And along with Karen, it included Stacy Lowry, Dr. Washington, LaShonda Hart, certainly the guidance and direction of Dr. Campbell, and others who I may miss. I apologize if I missed the others. But the point I'm making is I'm very excited about responding to this as early as November 18. But I also want you to know that this is not easy. It has not been easy to come up with these solutions that have been presented to you, and we have more work to do as well. So more to come on that. And then secondly, I want to thank the community partners, including the City of Charlotte, as well as some of the other partners that Karen referenced in her presentation. This is a community collaboration that requires a community solution to address these problems. It doesn't just fall on the city, because they have public safety, but it's going to take all of us to address this. I just wanted to make that point before we transition to the next item, which is Zach Wyatt, who's going to provide the board an update on the Carolina Farm Trust.
Thank you. While Zach walks up, I think Commissioner Dunlap had something to say.
Yeah, I, I, I want to thank all those people being involved, too. But I just, just, just a reminder, we have a similar issue at Reagan Drive and Sugar Creek. And that community is asking for a plan as well. And I don't know that we have a formulated plan. But I, I hope the same effort would be put into that area as well. And of course, part of this area, Beatty's Ford Road, is in District Three as well.
That area, as well as others, are being factored in this plan. We have to start somewhere, obviously. And given the scale, the size of Reagan Drive, we wanted to start with the other area, off Beatty's Ford Road, to brief lessons learned, and then shift our focus to Reagan Drive, Milton Avenue, as well as one or two other spots also. So it is certainly on the radar. And we plan to provide the same level of attention and effort, just like we're doing with Katherine Simmons.
Welcome.
Well, Vice Chairman Altman, Board of County Commissioners, County Manager Bryant, really thank you guys so much for inviting me today to kind of give you an update. I kind of do a terrible job of just reflecting, you know, on progress that we've made. You know, we turned 10 years old this year. You know, when we were kind of going through this, and Commissioner Dunlap, you know, you and Jim Bab and I met, you know, kind of in the summer of '21, kind of talking about this vision. You know, the County Manager's Office, County Manager Bryant, and at that time, County Manager Diorio and Adrian, we all went to the location and just kind of sat in an empty warehouse to kind of see what could be. And then I was in this, you know, building four years ago, kind of presenting what this project can, can look like for the county. So really, thank you so much for giving us, you know, this opportunity, and really giving this opportunity to update you on kind of what we've accomplished. There we go. So just kind of give a, the quick agenda is just really, just kind of a background on our mission as a whole, give you an update around CFT Market, the two contracts that we have with Mecklenburg County, with review, and then just kind of our current status. So really, our mission truly is to kind of build an economic model, to protect farmland, foster an ecosystem of sustainable farming, and then help create the next generation of, of Carolina farmers. But it's very much about building a system, you know, for everyone. And the way that we solve food insecurity, food set, food access is really kind of building a local regional food system truly for everyone. And so our footprint has expanded a little bit this year, but we have Free Spirit Farm, which is still under development up in, on this Connersville Charlotte line, right behind North Lake Mall. We have the urban farm at Aldersgate. We did get a piece of property donated to us a few months ago. Right off North Shamery Road is an abandoned church that long-term, we hope to kind of turn into another CFT Market retail site. But that's kind of a, a long-term. And then obviously, we have our CFT Market location that's in West Charlotte. And what we're really trying to push to the community, our government community, our corporate community, our other nonprofits, and the public as a whole, is how do we really look at local first and not local last? So we've been really identifying all of our farmers all across North and South Carolina, you know, who are the partnerships that we want to align with from government, corporations, small businesses, our non, our other nonprofit partners, and retail consumers and schools. And then how is, with this project, again, investing in that local infrastructure, is because the infrastructure is what's so important on how we can build this and really scale it. And then intentionally embed into communities where it's needed. And then continue to offer comprehensive programs to continue to kind of remind everyone on that why. And why do we need this, and why this is important? So just to go over a quick, you know, with, from vision to reality, we identified the, well, the building kind of identified us in April of 2021. We really spent, you know, June of '21 to '22, kind of in that planning mode, getting support from the County Manager's Office, getting, you know, support from Commissioner Leek. You know, this building is in her district. We were very fortunate and lucky to be the first recipient in January of '22, which we immediately, you know, hit the ground running with, you know, getting architects, getting our engineering, getting all our permitting, which took about two years to do. And then construction began in December of '23, and then we got our certificate of occupancy in August '24. And we've been, you know, open since August for a little bit over, kind of a year and a half. And then we did get our permit for Phase Two of the project that I'll talk about later in December of '24. So here's just a few pictures of kind of before construction. I know some of you have been on-site, you know, prior to starting construction, and I know a few have been on-site since we finished. So it was just one big empty shell. It was important for us to really kind of keep the integrity of the building. You know, renovations sometimes are a little bit more expensive than just a, a new build, but we definitely wanted to keep the character of, you know, the building in the South Hoskins neighborhood. You know, here's just a little bit more of just kind of the construction process and kind of our commercial kitchen kind of taking, taking shape. And here's kind of more, kind of on its finish, with our cold storage, you know, our commercial kitchen, kind of our box truck there, and then just kind of our logo kind of in our lobby. So here's basically the investment breakdown. This is not, it's in, just inclusive of, of county funds. This is kind of the funds that we have raised, you know, over the last three or four years. So the renovation costs, you know, were around 6.2 million. Equipment costs were about 1.2. We have two spinner vans and a big box truck with the fleet that we've been able to create, the IT infrastructure that we've been building out. And then from an operational standpoint, our 2022 operational budget, as we kind of, to get started, was 703,000. 2023, as we kind of ramped up there, was 1.7. 2024 was 2.8. And then 2025, we kind of had to reduce down to 2.1 from kind of a year-to-date. So here's kind of the community impact that we've had so far. We did create 34 jobs in 2024. Just through some attrition, we landed kind of around 20, around 25 of what we thought we would kind of maintain at the current state that we were in. When Hurricane Helene came through in, last fall, we were able to partner up with World Central Kitchen. So we spent really the, the entire month of October and early part of November, and we were able to create 23,269 hot meals that went directly into the Boone area. So we delivered them every morning, hot. And it was a great, great realization of how important that space is, especially in an emergency situation. And we really want to thank our volunteers from Bank of America, Truist, Wells Fargo, and others that, I mean, we were in at four or five o'clock in the morning, making sure all that was packaged hot to get delivered out. Since 2022 to date, we've been able to generate $646,000 to our North and South Carolina farmers, which is a great number for us, especially at the stage that we're in. But that is a very small number to what we're capable of, and we're really excited of, about that revenue generation. We've had, we've been able to do 147 pop-up markets just around Charlotte, you know, over the course of this year. We did get our mobile SNAP capability in August of 2025. It took us about like a year and a half to get that. But the cool thing about that mobile SNAP capability is it's mobile. So it's really not tied to an, an address. We can kind of hopscotch, you know, kind of anywhere we want in the county. And then we were able to work with 57 total farms over the last three years. Around 15 is where we've kind of spent the most of that 646,000, but we did work with a total of 57. And so just to kind of highlight some of our community partnerships, The Park Church, Archway Health Center, well, North Carolina Central University, all work with us and buy produce from us, and, and, and we deliver to them, and they can give the produce out to their stakeholders and community, which has been great, because it's revenue generation for our farms. And then we just handle all those logistics and make it very easy on them on that distribution side. Friday Day Ministries is a partner of ours in South Hoskins with Beverly Knox Davis. They utilize our space from time to time for events, and then as we have things, we donate, we donate to them. I can't say enough about Freedom Fighting Missionaries. With Kenny, he had helped us with some housing for some of our employees, and very much helped one of our employees with, with some, you know, court issues that they had. We have a great partnership with Isabella Santos Foundation. They gave us a grant to supply medically tailored meals to pediatric cancer kids at the St. Jude and Novant Clinic over off Hawthorne, because there really was no food component there. So that's been really, really great. We have a great relationship with Art Pop and kind of interweaving their artists, you know, kind of into our events, which has been great. When Heal Charlotte had their housing facility over in Sugar Creek, we had a little bodega in there, and was really helpful and grateful for Greg's support and partnership. And then Metro School, our farm, farm team was really able to help Metro School, which is a special needs school up in Uptown, and renovating their greenhouse, which is now operational. And we're able to work with our contractor, Balfour Beatty, and they basically did the renovations at no cost, so they could kind of keep that grant, grant funding for more of the programming that they wanted to use. So highlighting just what we're doing with Mecklenburg County Senior Nutrition. So we have provided 20,000, and FY '25, we provided 20,405 pounds of produce to 505 customers per month at 13 locations. And then so far, FY '26, year-to-date, we're at 6,045 pounds at 470 customers at 11 locations. And so Senior Nutrition will come to our facility, you know, sometimes three times a week, sometimes once, sometimes twice, you know, and picks up produce and then, and does their mobile pantry run. And then to highlight our partnership with the Mecklenburg Community Resource Center Partnership, and LV, LV Scarborough CRC in FY '25, we helped serve 1,0286 households with 3,000, 3,422 individuals, individuals distributing 9,457 pounds of food. And with Valerie C. Woodard, we served 1,729 households with 4,600 individuals distributing 10,530 pounds of, of food. And so far, year-to-date, FY '26, serving 204 households and 487 individuals and 945 pounds of food to LV Scarborough, and 466 households, 729 individuals, and 1,187 pounds of food to Valerie C. Woodard. And again, this is just another great example of using, you know, funds to support our farming, farming community from an economic standpoint, and really getting the best food on earth, you know, to the most vulnerable people in our communities. So here's kind of where our, kind of our challenges and opportunities. 2025 is always supposed to be a very big spend year for us, because we wanted to get kind of a true baseline of kind of where we were from a revenue standpoint, our spend standpoint. And so we had $2.5 million in, in a community project fund grant with Congresswoman Adams' office in the FY '25 federal budget that we were counting on. And then obviously, we found out in late March, you know, that we were not going to get that, since they did a full-year continuing resolution. And then we were able, lucky enough with, with County Manager's support, get another 850,000 in community project funding grant, you know, through Congresswoman Adams in this FY '26 budget. But obviously, we understand that that's been delayed, and with the current shutdown hopefully ending, now we have a new January 30th date of when that CR expires, and hopefully they'll pass a full budget, which will obviously allow us to kind of access that money almost immediately. And so we are, you know, searching for our short-term funding. You know, transparently, we have about four months of cash flow to keep going. But we are working very, we're working very hard, you know, working every angle that we can. And we're kind of going to begin kind of our, our public campaign here shortly. But the, there is a lot of opportunity. I mean, I think that demand is way up. I think the understanding to the, to the public as a whole, that our food system is really in crisis. You know, our farming community across the United States are struggling. And so there is no better time to really focus on regional food systems. You know, everyone we talk to, you know, is wanting to know how they can kind of work with us, how they can kind of buy from us. And we're excited that our online platforms are starting to, hopefully, they're in testing mode and beta testing now, and we're hoping they will go live here shortly. And so we will actually have a retail online portal, where folks can, you know, go on our online retail portal and, and buy, and we're going to have specific pickups, and we're going to work on a delivery model. And that'll, we're going to work with our retail consumers and kind of our wholesale partners. And we're also very excited about, you know, we have a permit-ready Phase Two, which consists of, you know, a grocery store in a food insecure area, event space, you know, the teaching kitchen, the meat processing facility. You know, this project is shovel-ready. You know, so we are, you know, really looking at, you know, private, you know, funders and, and really trying to get this, you know, next phase funded, because that's really where all our revenue generation can really happen. I mean, just the event space alone will pretty much pay for all of our operational costs at the building. So, you know, Commissioner Leek, we will not rest until we get that grocery store, you know, open in your district. And I know the community in South Hoskins, you know, is, is really eager for it to open as well. And just to kind of leave you with just some quotes that we, from the farmers that we've worked with, you know, over the last few years with, you know, Senior Nutrition and VCW. I mean, I'll let you guys read these, you know, in your packets, you know, but the, the funds that you have allocated to, you know, purchase these foods to the CRCs and to Senior Nutrition has had major impact, you know, on the farmers that we're working with, and allowing them to scale. There's not one farmer that I know that wants a grant. You know, they want to earn it. And funds like this, and being able to actually put it back into the economy, really allows that to happen. And once there's revenue there, all good things starts to follow. And that's kind of really exciting, what excites me about the work that we've been doing and what we've been, you know, striving for, for the last 10 years, is really starting to, really starting to take shape. You know, and I'm very, very proud of the work, you know, that we've done and getting this far. I know you, all, you, all of you know how hard construction projects are. So be able to get in this into a very tight timeline and deal with all the supply chain and inflation, everything that we've had to deal with during, you know, those renovation costs. I'm so proud of the relationship we've been able to build with Congresswoman Adams' office and her continued support. I really want to say thank you to our past County Manager Gina Diorio, for all of her guidance and support as we've gone through, and our current County Manager Bryant, who has continued that support. And we're very proud of our relationship with the county, and we hope it's, it's a long-lasting. I've been to Climate Week and Clinton Global Initiative and conferences all over the place. We are leading as a county in this space, and I hope you all are very proud of that as well. So thank you again for the opportunity. I would love to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I will start on my right with Commissioner Griffin.
Again, I need to get these questions. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt, for your presentation. I first got this information almost a year ago exactly, doing an HHS presentation on food insecurity with Dr. Washington. And I started looking into all of food insecurity, not yours. I asked for contracts with everybody.
Yeah.
We do business with. And I was really heartbroken when I started reading your, your documents. They were all focused on black folk that lived in the Hoskins community. You spoke eloquently about the conditions of African Americans in Hoskins, and why the building was on 511 South Hoskins Road. Everyone that was in that, that program, I talked to, Samia Haines, Chris Smalls, Beverly, everyone. And they really have not good things to say. But I'm going to run through my But I'm going to run through my, was that a part of it?
No, that was.
Oh. I'm going to run through my questions real quickly if they run out and you have them in your hand. How much taxpayer funding combined from Mecklenburg County, the city of Charlotte, state of North Carolina, and the federal government has Carolina Farm Trust received to address food insecurity in the Hoskins area, 2021 to present? How do you reconcile the many public statements and promises, interviews such as the one on WBT on February 2nd, 2022 with Chris Peak in regards to Carolina Farm Trust attacking food insecurity in the Hoskins community with your current level of food insecurity service being delivered by Carolina Farm Trust disparities? Explain your ability to provide Mecklenburg County as a vendor locally sourced eggs for $3 per dozen, fresh ground beef for $7.50 per pound, fresh ground pork for $6 per pound, seasonal produce for $3.87 per pound, bread at $4.50 per half loaf, and cooking demonstrations for $15 per person while residents of the Hoskins community can still not have access to comparable, reliable, year-round source of affordable nutritious foods? Fourth, in your opinion, is the pop-up market one day a week on Wednesdays from 12 noon to 4:00 fulfilling your commitment to provide the Hoskins community with a reliable, year-round source of fresh, affordable, nutrient-dense food? And five, in your funding proposal of 2021 to Mecklenburg County on page two, outcomes, what did you mean by fresh, nutritious, culturally relevant foods? I've looked at the minutes from this board from January of 2022 and all documents and it's just heartbroken that all the folks that you're serving, all the things you're doing, and the folks in Hoskins are not receiving those services. All I can determine from the county so far is 6.7 million. Your proposal to the county was 14 million for the whole shebang. And my time is up, Madam Chair. If there's a second round, I'll come back to it.
I'm happy to defer some of my time to you also, but go ahead.
But the.
On the second round.
On the second round, all right?
Well, I'll defer since I'd rather hear it all.
Okay. Then if you want to defer your time, continue, Mr. Griffin, Commissioner Griffin.
My point is the folk who live in Hoskins, of which the premise for this local food production and distribution center was supposed to be supportive of, it seems to be supportive for everybody else except the people in Hoskins. And that concerns me deeply, Mr. Wyatt, in terms of any more public dollars going into this production. If you're so kind to answer those questions, I'd appreciate that. And if there's any follow-up, if time permits, we'll try to respond to those. But I'd really like to hear your response.
Yeah, sure. So as far as your funding question, the total Mecklenburg County was 6.7, the city of Charlotte was 1.5. We have not gotten any state funding directly, and the federal government was four. You know, and so, but you also have to understand that all that money wasn't given all in one shot. You know, it was, it was kind of piecemealed throughout the process. And costs, as you guys understand, when, the moment that we started construction, everyone, everything went threefold, supply chain issues and trying to get the building done, you know. And so we were making the best decisions that we could at the time. And we were very clear from the onset that we were building an earned revenue model. I mean, we've helped Shemaya Haynes with refrigeration with, you know, her project over off of Tuskegee and Enderly. We have, we helped Beverly get, you know, with Friday Day Ministries with refrigeration for her hub. And so I feel like we have, we're working as best we can. I agree that we haven't been able to do enough and, but a large part of that is funding, you know, and it's trying to kind of build an earned revenue model so we can kind of continue to do this work without, without it just being 100% linear. And then it's gone. You know, so I mean, with your, so the broke. We were going into 2023 and 2024 with a lot of momentum and then just a lot of things shifted, you know, from with the economy. You know, so there's a lot of things we just kind of had to pause because we had that $2.5 million that were coming, I mean, because most of these, most of the costs of these upfront went to renovations. It went to equipment to get the whole entire building set up. And then it went to build a whole staff and to build that capacity, you know, with that staff. I mean, when, I mean, when I was in, at that vote in January of '22, we were an organization of one. And then we grew very rapidly. You know, we, I mean, as you've kind of seen through our timeline, we worked very hard to kind of get to where we were. And then not understanding, kind of making decisions with funding just being not, not the, the funding at that point in time is, was kind of, it just, it just gave us pause or gave me pause because we had kind of put the pedal to the metal to it and started to kind of really ramp up. And then when that budget didn't get, the federal budget didn't get passed in '24, it got delayed. And so then we kind of paused and then it didn't happen, you know, in '25, you know, and then it was just like, okay, now we're kind of in survival mode. So I will 100% take accountability that we haven't done as much as we would want to on the food insecure space in the Hoskins community. We're trying. We continue to try. But again, we're in a survival mode at this, at this moment in time and then we're trying to create as much earned revenue, you know, as we possibly can to stay afloat.
So I don't want to interrupt you, but I do want to be sure that Mr. Commissioner Griffin's questions get answered. Could you address two through five because I don't know that I've heard that yet?
Not number two?
I guess to the extent you can, can you address the remaining things that you don't think you've addressed?
Yes. So, you know, as far as the disparity goes, I mean, the contracts that we have with Senior Nutrition and with the CRCs are pretty much pass-through. I mean, we, it's not a money-making venture for us. Most of those funds are going to the farms and smells that we're sourcing from. And by the time we take delivery and labor into it, I mean, we're not getting $3.87 a pound, you know, on seasonal produce. I mean, Senior Nutrition's at $3.47 and the CRCs are at $3.67. We haven't really done any bread or any pork. We do do the ground beef. I mean, Russell Brothers, I mean, that we're getting the pork from is, or the ground beef from in Concord. I mean, their cost to us is $7.25 a pound. You know, the eggs are $6 a dozen that we are getting from Harmony Ridge and from Free Folk over in Conover. So does that answer your question around the disparity on the costs there?
The question is about if you can provide it to the county. Why couldn't you provide some of this for residents of Hoskins?
Well, I mean, we've done, I mean, it's, it's hard to, they, the communication that's been received to me is they really want that brick and mortar there and I just don't have the brick and mortar yet. You know, we've.
The people from Hoskins have said they want to have the brick and mortar there?
That's the communication that I've received. They want to see that grocery store built and which I completely understand. I mean, we've played with the farm stand, we've done the farm stands every week up until October.
Do you, do you know Dr. Greg Moss?
I do not.
I assume that Commissioner Griffin's and Commissioner Dunlap's, collective six minutes elapsed. I didn't hear the bell, but I'm going to move on to Commissioner Meyer.
Hey, Zach, thank you. So I'm just going to go through my questions really quickly. So first of all, do you support Mecklenburg County farmers and specifically out of that 57? How many and which ones specifically? And how, how often are you open for the community? And how many employees do you have? And so I got the list of farmers. And the community partners that you listed, starting with the Park Church, et cetera. When you say they're community partners, can you explain, you know, I heard what you said about Kenny and Freedom Fighting Missionaries, but what part of food is it that you're doing with them? I mean, we gave you $6.7 million. This is for food insecurity. So what exactly are you doing with some of them? If you could just give me some examples?
Well, I mean, again, I want to be clear, you guys gave us $6.7 million and I was very clear that we're going to build a model. And it's a model that we have to have all full functioning parts of to really address food insecurity. It can't be piecemealed. You know, to, as far as the farmers in Mecklenburg County, I mean, we've supported farmers in Mecklenburg County in the past. Most of the farmers in Mecklenburg County are more focused on retail, not wholesale. We've, most of the farms that we are working with are in kind of the 16-county Charlotte metro area. But we've, we've worked with any farmer that wants to work with us. So, I mean, there's no not working with a farmer. We had about 25 employees, as I said, you know, kind of over the past couple, two years. We're now down to about seven. You know, through attrition, we just weren't kind of replacing because of, you know, just kind of where we were at the budget. And then when the shutdown kind of happened and having our, the federal funds that we had secured being in doubt, we just had to do a layoff in October. So we're kind of down to the bare minimum for just to us to continue to operate. So we have had to pivot and I totally understand that. And so we are very much, again, focusing on our, one big mission too, is making sure, you know, to supporting our farming community as best we can. I know we have big initiatives to protect farmland and the biggest way to protect farmland is making sure our farmers have revenue to support the farm itself. And as far as our, the partnerships that we have, I mean, the Park Church Center Well, Archwell, they reach out to us and it's very similar to Carolina's Senior Nutrition program. You know, they put orders in for us to provide, that they buy produce or proteins or eggs from us and we deliver them and then they are able to distribute that to their stakeholders. So we're very much, you know, as trying to play a conduit and that's another premise of what we were trying to do. I was never happy with what we were able to do for the Hoskins community, but it was hard just with staffing and trying to kind of figure that out. And it's something that we will continue to focus on and work on as our hopefully funding streams, you know, can get turned back on. You know, I'm not pleased with it either.
And just, he didn't answer, how often are you open?
Well, I mean, right now, we don't have any, we had to tailback all of the retail markets that we've done and just due to staffing and budget.
And what? I'm sorry?
We don't have the, I don't have the budget right now to have staff to operate the retail markets like we were doing.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you. Yeah. I echo the concerns of my colleagues. And, you know, when you did talk about the beef and the pork coming from Concord and Conover, you know, and yet this is Mecklenburg County dollars mostly that you're, you know, operating from or that you use to build your business. So I'm concerned about the local farmers. You had said in your comments that most of the farmers in Mecklenburg are focused on retail, not wholesale. So does that mean that the model isn't working for what you intended to do? Because my understanding was we were trying to help local farms survive. And, and so I'm really concerned about that and I better get my, all my words out before the bell rings. So I would like more clarity around, does that mean you've given up on Mecklenburg farmers? And also you said that you have seven employees. I'd like to know if those are full-time or part-time employees. And I also would like to know, Mr. Manager, from you, if this project fails, what sort of recourse, is there any recourse for the county? Because we've put in the most. This is similar to my concerns around the Excelsior Club and other projects that we've taken on that, you know, we contribute money and then what happens if it fails? Do we have contingencies that are built into our contracts where, you know, we get some, some stake, you know, back? Do we get to sell part, you know, how do we, what is the recourse? Let's see, that is, I did speak to a local farmer who said that they, they wanted to work with you all and they were, they couldn't even get the food safety protocol figured out, like how to transport food, the protocols that you're using to transport food. And so I'm, at this point, really, I'm really concerned about this whole model and whether it's going to work at all.
Well, to your last point, I mean, unless I know specifics, I mean, I don't know what to say to that. And as far as the model, the model is working. I mean, that's what's exciting to me to the most, that it is starting to really work.
But before you, before you move on, the model is supposed to be earned revenue, an earned revenue model, which you said that's not working. That's the aspect of it that's not working?
No, I mean, we need time, you know, and when we had the funding model that, I mean, when we had the funding, we need time to build that earned revenue model. It's not going to get turned on overnight. It was, I was very clear, you know, when we had our conversations four years ago, that it was going to take about three years to kind of build it out. You know, and to your point, I mean, retail versus wholesale, there are farms that operate on a retail model. You know, they have, I mean, I've talked to Hodges Farms, they don't have the production, you know, to work with us because what they do on a retail level is, is what they do. They don't have the production level to move into kind of a wholesale. I mean, Senior Nutrition, I mean, you know, the CRCs are going through 140 pounds of chicken every week, you know, and so it's not a, it's not an either-or model. A retail, a farm that can operate on a retail model and be successful is amazing. And so the point of what we're building in the, in the vehicle that we're kind of building is those farms that are wanting to grow and have a blend of a retail model that they have direct access to their clientele to. And they also have land that they want to grow and have a wholesale, you know, opportunity because they can move more volume, you know, obviously at lesser, at lesser price points. So it's not a, it's not, it's not either or. You know, and so the whole point of what we're trying to create, you know, is that earned revenue model so we can be never revenue neutral, but also be self-funded in a lot of these buckets. I mean, that's the, especially when one's Phase Two, you know, comes online, that is the large part of our revenue generating activity because it has the most margins in it. So, I mean, the, the things that we're dealing with SNAP and all of that, that is the system that we're really trying to build off the ground because it's scalable. I mean, the government, I mean, you, I mean, it's hard, I'm sure, for you all to feel like, how are we supposed to respond to 140,000 people, you know, that are not going to get their SNAP benefits? The model that we're trying to build is utilizing a access for everyone to participate in this system. And then we can take those profits and then self-fund buckets so we can scale up, you know, when the needs are really truly there. So it's not completely reliant on philanthropy and it's not completely reliant on government. We have to have an economic engine that kind of feeds the need and really looking at dissolving those needs and again, not treating them because the needs always are going to outweigh what we can do philanthropically and from a government level. So that's what this whole model is trying to kind of really build out.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
What, could, could, the question about the.
Okay. Mr. Manager.
So I'm not prepared today to, to state some approach that the county would take if this fails. Regarding the contract, I, I don't have the contract available. Dr. Washington certainly is in a better position than I am to speak to the terms of the contract and what we have. But if this was to fail, just like any other investments that we make, the impact will be that we will still have food insecurities, that food desert out there. And we will have to shift our focus. And again, if this fails, what are the lessons learned as we move forward in trying to address the food insecurity, the food desert in that part of the community? Because that doesn't go away. I will also say that Zach has been in constant contact with me since the last couple of months when, as he realized, the funding was not coming through. As we experienced the federal government freeze, he's kept me abreast with some of the tough staffing decisions that he's had to make in addition to his efforts to receive funding from corporate sponsorship and trying to get some, some commitments that have been made along the line in the future years and months to get them up in advance. So I do have some insight on that, but in terms of if this fails, I'm not prepared to say what that looks like. But we know the consequence would be still having a food desert in that part of the community that we have to. desert in that part of the community that we have to figure out.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I've got several questions, a lot of them Commissioner Griffin asked, and I don't think that we got, actually, I don't think that we've gotten an answer to any of the questions that have been posed so far, but I'm going to just go and list all of my questions down the line, and hopefully, maybe at another time, because there's no way that you could answer all of this now. My first question is, where and how do you collect the data specifically, you know, on the data that you provided from these slides? I don't think that's enough data, because what I'm looking for is impact. So, I would love to see a chart as to when you first began with your contracts, what you proposed was going to be done, and the return on investment versus what has actually been done, what has been the return on those investments? You know, I know that as a 501(c)(3), I'm assuming that's what your designation is, that you have to have yearly audited records. So, I would love to know who does those, and if we could be made privy to those. As well, is there any, do you look at, and are you coordinating with our dashboard that we have in those areas? And hearing what you were saying about Hoskins, I, I think I know the answer to that. How many, so we have a hun, about 150 farms in Mecklenburg County. You said that over three years, I don't know what this like, because our slide numbers are different than yours. Over three years, you have generated $646,047 to farmers. How many farmers is that? And are any of those farmers in Mecklenburg County? Because I think that's significant. I think that it's significant if there are no farmers in Mecklenburg County that you've served. That number is not good at all. $646,000 for farmers, and you said you didn't know any farmer that would rather have a grant? You're not talking to the right farmers. So, what was the target and the number of farms? How are you working with those farmers as far as environmental stewardship? We have our chair here with that. The, the list of partners, I know that you had some comments from farmers there on your sheet. Are there any testimonials that you can give from community partners that say that, yeah, this is a great program, and if it were not for this program, we would not be able to serve the community of folks that we serve? I would love to see that.
I mean, I, I can provide, I mean, I can ask them for testimonials for sure, Commissioner. You know, back to, you know, the audits, our contracts require audits, so we have a federal audit from 2023 and a federal audit from 2024 that Dean Dorton has done, and happy to share that with you. We have worked with 57 farms across the region over the last couple of years. As I have said, there are a lot of farms in Mecklenburg County, they're just not true production farms from a wholesale perspective, and those are the ones that we kind of work with.
Is that what you proposed, that you would only work with wholesale farmers?
It's not only, there's, it's not, we will work with any farm. I mean, we're not hard to find. I mean, we've, I mean, we're not hard to find, and, I mean, if farmers are looking to sell, if they have extra produce, I mean, we're, we're right there.
But it was your proposal that you would go to them, so you said you're not hard to find, but if you're only going to wholesale farmers or expecting farms to go to you, then that's the question that I'm asking. How, what, what does your model do for us? What is the impact to Mecklenburg County?
Well, I mean, what our hope is, is that we're going to create more and more demand, and then more farms will move from hay and maybe move into production. Most of those farms are, are farms that are doing hay, or they're doing some sort of, you know, cattle or, or what have you, that they sell at a wholesale market.
So, how many of those markets in Mecklenburg County are wholesale?
I don't know. I don't think, I would be, I mean, I don't know, I can't say it's for certain zero, but I don't think there's many.
I, I think the alarm went off, we're going to need a second round. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. So, I think I'll just start off with, like, the survival mode.
Do you mind if I grab a, a water?
I don't mind.
If you don't mind.
Please don't count that as my time.
Here, takes your time.
Don't do that, don't take it.
We can restart Commissioner Powell's clock.
Okay. Well, as, as we're sitting here, you know, I'm thinking about how serious the problem is in this area, in District Two, and how, you know, how, I've heard Commissioner Dunlap speak to, you know, how, how deeply this affects him. I remember Commissioner Jarrell talking about it, even this week, just seeing how much groceries cost at Dollar General, just to have groceries, like, if you don't have a place, it's so, like, it's more expensive than Harris Teeter. So, we want this to work. We wouldn't have invested these many dollars. We want this to work. And so, I think when you're in survival mode, people get really defensive. And so, we're hearing a lot of defensiveness, and we need to change the, change that. So, how, you know, we want it to work, we want, we want to get there. So, how can you change your approach to where you're, instead of being defensive, you're really thinking about why the community is upset right now? How do you listen better to, instead of being defensive, how can you listen? And I think a good step, and, and it's up to you, Commissioner Lee, I really think there needs to be a, some kind of community town hall where you have community partners and community that is suffering from not having a food desert to come in. There are so many volunteers that work in this space. So, you know, while you're in this, this state of survival, you know, how do you find people to come in and help? You know, I know St. Andrews does tons of gleaning on farms, and, you know, how do, I really want you to think about, how do you connect with people to hear them? And, no, no, it's your district, so it's your choice, like, if you want to have a town hall. I'm happy to come with you. I think that listening to the community about why they're upset right now is really important. So, I just would encourage you to, you know, answer the questions. This is a lot of money, but remember, we all want this to work. So, how do we do it together without being defensive and really listening to the community? Because there's been such a huge investment in it, and defensiveness isn't working. You have to really hear people to, to respond to them. Thank you.
Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Lee.
Let me first say thank you for being here. I've listened to all of the comments, and I have been into that community. And I have a second community, it's the West Side, and it's struggling too with food desert. Didn't just happen last night, or last week, or two years ago. It's always been a food desert. And I've met with our former manager on several occasions to talk about how and what can we do as a board and community to eradicate that problem. And what I'm finding, that the grocery stores will not come into the black community because of numbers. That's number one. Number two, in those apartment buildings downtown that I said I would sit out at 4:00 and watch who came out, the numbers are not that large, but they have small grocery stores within the confines of those facilities. So, that says to me that there's some form of segregation when it comes to food being provided in our community. Where do you find heart problems? Where do you find high blood pressure? All of this, and, and also, the problem of air is always in our community. And when I talk about it, people want to get upset with me, but I could care less. I'm living in the community, and I'm not going to say it's all his fault or all our fault. My question now is, where is his budget and where is the contract? What are we being held accountable for? And the manager and his team can give us a recommendation, because we're asking the same kinds of questions around this deus and getting the same answers. So, how do we eradicate this problem, looking at the West Side and its food desert process, looking at the same community we're just talking about? I remember the first meeting we had in a home in that community, three people were killed, and I rushed and left a meeting here to go to the neighborhood over there to see what I could do as a county commissioner, which was nothing. I'm not trained in medicine. So, there are major issues and major problems in our community that didn't just happen. They were inherited because of how Charlotte has set up housing and communities in this, in, in our community. So, I'm asking for a copy of your budget and the manager, and to see how funds have been spent, where they have been spent. What corrections could be made to eradicate this problem, or either to bring the two communities together that's working on the food deserts? If that would be possible, I'd like to ask, who was the staff person who oversaw this process, who worked with this young man in that community from the, from the board?
Madam Vice Chair, at some point, if it is the board's pleasure, Dr. Washington is prepared to speak to what is outlined in the contract, what the accountability is and the terms, to give you a little more insight on that.
Thank you. I was actually going to call for that when it was my turn, but before we do that, I just want to do a time check. It's 4:30. I'm happy for us to, you know, I know there was some interest for a second round. We can do that, we can skip commission reports, or we can have a motion to extend our time and do both. So, let me skip commission reports.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, we're going to continue with this conversation.
That's one person saying that.
Well, there, if, if you're comfortable continuing the conversation around food insecurity, can you just raise your hand, so I can have a little sense of the situation? All right, so, we're going to skip commission reports, continue with food insecurity. And further to Commissioner Lee's point, and, and now that it is my turn to speak, I would like to ask Dr. Washington if you could come, or, or turn on your microphone there. I would like to know staff's assessment of compliance with the contract, and I would like to make a formal request that we get the contract, so we can all look at it, and to get a copy of the budget. Since we've been a major contributor, if you can please, Mr. Wyatt, agree to provide that to the board. Can you do that?
Budget, the audit financials.
The, the audited financials. Thank you, Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
The budget.
Sure. Good afternoon. Thank you, Vice Chair Altman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, let me speak, there are a number of different sort of mechanisms here, so I can describe what they are. The first pot of resources that you guys are most familiar with is the $6.7 billion, which were obligated to Carolina Farm Trust through the ARPA funding that was distributed by the county. And so, those contracts were established and managed through the county manager's office prior, during the prior leadership as a part of the proposals to the board to approve funding to be obligated from the ARPA funds that we received as a county. Those investments are, that $6.7 million was dispersed in three different contracts. Well, one contract that was amended twice as a result of actions from the Board of County Commissioners, and those investments were obligated for capital purposes at the facilities that Zach described. So, that's pot number one. The, there are, there's also two operational contracts that currently run through two departments. One is through the Department of Community Resources, as Zach has mentioned. We, and Commissioner Griffin mentioned earlier, we are, we have a contract that is valued at about $100,000 a year to purchase the produce and meat to fund, to supply the two food banks that are in the Community Resource Center, so the one at Valerius C. Witter and the one at Elbe Scarborough. Again, we purchase that produce directly from CFT, they, it's brought to the facility, and it's available to our residents to support our food pantry. That is a contract, it is, and it was, it is treated as every other contract that we have in the county in terms of a vendor. That's not ARPA, that's general fund dollars that's going to that. The second contract is for, with the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, which is to support our senior nutrition program, and that funds the produce that's provided from CFT to the mobile market program. So, as you guys know, we have the two mobile markets that are serving the community. That contract is valued at about $170,000 per year, and again, that's us purchasing produce directly from CFT that's, that is supplied on the mobile markets that are going out into the community. And so, those are three different mechanisms that are treated differently and have different accountabilities built into them.
Okay, thank you. So, when you send, don't leave yet. When you send the contracts to the board, I think there's an interest to see it, what I'm hearing you say is you believe the contracts are being properly performed as regards the county, commitments made directly to the county. Did I hear you right?
Yeah, so, on the, I'll do, start with the latter two. The latter two are service contracts that we are purchasing produce and products from CFT, and they are meeting expectations on those contracts. So, they are, their performance is fine. The first contract that's been amended twice, the $6.7 million, again, that was a capital investment that the board elected to make, and it doesn't have the same kinds of performance measures or accountabilities baked into the contract. It was an ARPA contract for capital investments, and it is, it is not the same type of agreement, and it is not a recurring agreement.
Right, I understand that. It's sort of like Katie Blessing or other things that we've invested in to try to create a resource that the community needs. So, you know, one thing, we talk about inputs and outputs and outcomes, and to Commissioner YTI's point, I would like to have a heat map of food insecurity before and after, so that we can have a clear sense, if it can be done, of what progress, what outcomes we have actually achieved around closing the gap for food insecurity in this particular part of the county. All right, so, we have 20 minutes left. If, if each person had two minutes, that would be 18, that would get us pretty close. So...
Time for response, though.
Yeah, so, Commissioner Griffin?
I'll defer to my colleagues. You've heard, you've heard my comments. Well, I'll say something, because the manager raised something about food insecurity. What I've been asking since last November is how do we measure that? The state of North Carolina, HHS, has a program about accountability, results-based accountability, RBA, and one of the, one of the questions was, whatever the intervention is regarding food insecurity, over whatever period of time, the next question is, are in, are any of those interventions causing food households to be secure? Or are they permanently and constantly food insecure? And so, that's a longer discussion, Mr. Manager, as we look at everything we do in terms of food insecurity, in terms of what's the purpose? Because right now, I mean, I looked at all of the contracts that Dina gave me, and this was the very last one. And the question that I posed to, to Dina basically was, how do, how do you figure out what the impact is? And I think what you've said and what the contract so far has been, there, there are no metrics on this particular one, other than he's to build a local food production and distribution center, period. There's nothing in the contracts I've read... There's nothing in the contracts I've read that's related to the Hoskins community. So, I mean, it's just a problem in terms of our allocation of contracts and how do you extricate? But everybody around this table wants to see intervention and the results of that intervention. So I don't have any questions.
Thank you. And I'm going to give my two minutes to Commissioner Dunlap, who didn't get to speak last time, so that's four for you.
Well, I'll try to be quick. First thing I want to do is, and I don't know, I'm assuming you had the opportunity to look at this document produced by Commissioner Griffin. And, you know, when I look at that, I'm trying to figure out how this model works. If you got to pay $3 for a half dozen eggs and $6 a pound for ground beef, I'm trying to understand that. When yesterday I went to Walmart and I got a dozen eggs for $1.97, why are we paying $3 for a half dozen egg? You know, that's aside from dealing with the farmers. I want to understand if these numbers are correct and what that means in terms of your ability to purchase produce. But aside from all the other questions, it's clear that there are some issues here. I'd like to know what we can expect in Phase Two. And what can we expect from the investment that we've made? Because at some point, we're going to have to make a decision to either continue with this project or to sever ties. And I'm hoping this is something that we can finish. I don't like investments where we invest the county monies and then walk away. And so regardless of what's being said here today, we're going to figure out how we work together to move forward because the community still suffers. And so can you just respond to those concerns?
Yeah, I mean, the whole point is supporting local agriculture. You know, and can local agriculture compete on pricing when an industrialized food system? No, it can't. But that industrialized food system is also ruining your social determinants of health. You know, so we have to really rethink how we're looking at the cost of food. Because yes, you can buy cheap food, but then you're going to have chronic health issues. You know, and again, that's another data point, you know, that we're hoping to really fix long term. And this has always been a long-term project. Phase Two addresses the food insecurity piece hard enough. We worked very hard to get that permit. We didn't have to do it, you know, because it was a very big expense, you know, because I wasn't unsure, but I didn't want to give the funding community any excuse not to fund it. I don't know how to describe how I feel having a shovel-ready project and going into the funding community after we have received almost $14 million in government money to start this project because Phase One feeds Phase Two. I can't get them at the table. And I can't tell you why. I can only look in the mirror on that. But Phase Two addresses the food insecurity piece of it. The other, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, I agree with you, Commissioner Dunlap. I mean, it's how do we figure this out? My opinion, the government has done its job. You know, we have been trying to go to the private sector. There is not a door that I have not knocked on here locally. I'm trying to knock on them nationally. Food system work is hard because most of the foundations are very program-specific. The only thing we don't touch from an impact sector is housing. Everything else we have a kind of a huge implication on, but it's also very broad. And it's not specific. It's a system, we have a system problem and we need a system solution. And that's what we've been really focused on. I mean, you guys have seen the facility. You know, it, that's, again, Phase Two will address the food insecurity piece. If the money is there, it'll be built in six to eight months. Door's open.
Thank you.
And back to the point with all of you, from the community standpoint, you have every right to be upset. I'm upset. I mean, I feel terrible that we haven't been able to deliver faster. You know, when we initially went into this, we were really hoping that the initial investments would spur, you know, the private foundations, you know, to the table because it would be less risky. But that just hasn't happened. And I'll only say, I'm the only piece in that. I can't, I'm not going to blame anyone. You know, but we have a shovel-ready project that'll address this issue in eight months if it's funded. And all I'm asking, you know, support, I've, Commissioner Leake, I have tried to align with other partners because Three Sisters is trying to build one, Five Points is trying to build one. I have gone to them multiple times to try to come together and how do we have one ask that can address the entire West Side? You know, and for whatever reason, that just hasn't come to fruition. You know, so I mean, I want to, and Commissioner Powell, forgive me on the defensiveness because all this is very real. I mean, I think about it all day, every day. It never leaves. I take the investments that you all have provided very, very seriously. And we want to deliver. And the hardest part in this whole equation is we're like this close. You know, but we were supposed to get that private foundation community, you know, to compound with the government money runway that we had to really move forward quickly and it just didn't happen.
So thank you. I don't want to cut you off, but also want to be sure to give everyone their remaining two minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner SRN?
Thank you. I don't really need two minutes. I just want to say I really appreciate Commissioner Powell's comments, you know, that we really do want to make this work. We really want this to work. So I want you to know that, you know, where I'm coming from is just making sure that we're being accountable. And so it's, we definitely do want to make it work. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I would just ask if we can get like written responses to some of the questions. I don't know if you were able to capture those or?
There's a video.
There's a video that we can play back to. I think that the scorecard that we're building will prevent this from happening in the future. And I don't know if we can retroactively go back and apply it to certain things. But, you know, since I've been here, I know that there has been a lot of talk about return on investment. And I write grants. I've done grants. I know, I used to do all of the budget financials for grants. So understanding what you promised and then in your reports telling us specifically where that money went, line item by line item, where it goes and what's been the impact. Go back to your slide where you put your, yeah, right there, the challenges. Challenges and opportunities. You said you're in survival mode right now. That's not up there. You put up there that you've got $2.5 million in loss, but show us where the others are. Where are the other challenges that you stated? We want to know. Where are those coming from? What are the lines that those are coming from? And at some point, you know, if you can't handle it, if you're the only, you're the only name on the contracts I've looked at and you're the only name up there, if you can't handle the fiduciary responsibilities, have you considered handing it over to someone else? Because we do want this to work. We've invested so much. And Hoskins community is literally within walking distance for me, from my home. So yes, I absolutely want this to work. And one of my items was food insecurity. So this is critically important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you. I think sometimes when people, like in life, when people are in survival mode, it's such a heavy weight. And so they get slowed down by the heaviness of the survival mode in a time where you really, it hurts you. And so in the survival mode, how, you know, like the self-awareness matters and because you said, you know, looking in the mirror of, you know, how did this friction get created? And, you know, when we went to advanced leadership at the School of Government, we worked through, we do all kinds of different things to look within ourselves. And then at the end, like we help each other. And I think that would be good for you to have somebody, like a coach kind of person, to help you like understand how did this friction get created? Because your intention is so good. And now we have this amazing facility. So, you know, how do you, in this really hard time, come up with brainstorming ideas to get out of it? Because it's possible. Like really good things can come from this hard time. And, and I wish that for you. I wish that for Hoskins. You know, how do, how do you keep the heaviness from pulling you down? Because, you know, a lot of people are going through really heavy times now. And I don't know if you want to respond to that, but I'm just trying to help.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, back to the broken promises comment. I mean, I haven't broken any promises yet. Unless I quit, I haven't broken it yet. Again, we got to a permit. You guys know how hard that permit is. I mean, we haven't quit. We're still here. We're still fighting and we're doing the best we can. You know, and I'm happy to be accountable. But there are some failures of trying to build a system rather than doing it block by block. But the system doesn't work that way. You know, we would never even have broke ground if we, you know, tried to do it block by block. So we are trying to tackle, you know, something big. And you guys did a big thing. You know, and you guys should be proud of that big thing. None of us could have foreseen, you know, the pendulum swinging that far the other direction this quickly. I mean, the funding community just seems to be paralyzed, which I totally understand. You know, and again, I will take the accountability that I have in that, but it's not all on me either. You know, so we're, you know, we're doing a good job. My staff is doing a good job. You know, I feel like we can head or, you know, have our head held high on what we delivered. We said what we were going to deliver. We said that it was going to be in two phases and we needed Phase Two funded. And that's where the food insecurity piece really was going to be, you know, the most apparent to everyone because you have a brick and mortar that people can kind of walk into, which is, Commissioner Leake, will be kind of the first grocery store at that scale to come in to, you know, manage that. You know, so I am very proud of this, you know, building permit. Because it gives us, it's there. There is, I mean, you know, and again, back to permitting, you know, it's hard. I mean, community saw the amount of money that got invested, okay? It's two years. Why isn't more progress happening? Well, it took two years to get through permitting. That's why we were so aggressive, you know, with this permit, you know, so we would be shovel-ready when those funds hit. You know, so, you know, to all the Board of County Commissioners, we're open to any and every idea. We're open to a merger. We're open to, you know, anything to kind of see this, you know, forward. So the assets and the investments that have been made can flourish. And everything is teed up.
Thank you. And I want to give Commissioner Leake the last word here.
Commissioner Altman, you skipped me.
Oh, I did? So sorry.
I asked my questions really quickly.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Did you call on me or her?
I skipped her. She skipped me. For a second. So really quickly, and I understand what Commissioner Powell said about defensiveness and I definitely don't want that, but we do have questions. So my question is, you're 501(c)(3), correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So you have a Board of Directors?
Yes, ma'am.
So you have, you have to produce the financials for them every, however long they vote?
Yes, we have two, we have two clean federal audits that we're happy to share.
So it's not going to be a problem to get all that information to us in a town hall manner? And also, who owns that building outright?
It's the Lee family. So we have a 25-year lease on that we're four years into. And then we have the first option to purchase the building if they ever wish it to sell. They've been phenomenal through this whole process. You know, so we've been, you know, very lucky with them.
All right, thank you. Apologies to you. I'm so sorry. That's okay.
Commissioner Leake?
Thank you. Let me first say thank you to the board for your participation in this discussion. My recommendation is that we ask the manager along with this young man to provide the budget and the contract to make sure that you look at the contract, our contracts. And when I look and see first nonprofit grocery store is permitted and shovel-ready. And we don't want to give up on this venture for this community who needs it terribly bad and have always needed it. And in the community that we live in, we've always needed appropriate grocery stores that we have not ever gotten and we're still not getting it. Unless we find out where the shortcomings are. If we can enlarge that building or take the building that you have, make part of it into a grocery store and do the other profiting of the work that needs to be done from the farmer's perspective and work closely with the staff that we have and not just give up on us because we voted to provide the funds. Funds have been provided. And I still say, any organization that we finance, we must always look at their budget. But we never do. We don't want to look at people's budget. But we need to see how the money's been spent, where there's an error, if there is one, a shortcoming that we can handle. But we as nine people can't make any of this happen. All I'm saying is that we put it in the hands of the manager and his staff to come back to us with a recommendation of what would best be suited to maintain this organ, this facility and the movement of getting rid of the food desert in Hoskins.
Thank you, Commissioner Leake. Thank you to all my colleagues for a robust discussion. Thank you very much, sir, for being here. It's a really important conversation. And I certainly know that you're doing everything you can. And to what all of my colleagues have said, we want this to be a success and look forward to finding the best way forward through this difficult period. We have now come to the end of our agenda. So if there's nothing?
Move to adjourn.
Further, Mr. Manager, do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And we are adjourned.